All right, I have five thirty. I'll call, I think, are we ready to go? I'm Laura.
Yes, we're ready to go.
All right, I'll call to order the study session for the city council, City Cherry Hills Village City Council study session for Tuesday, February sixteenth. And first on the study session, really, one thing on the study session agenda is is our Comcast franchise agreement. And Kathy, would you like to introduce it for us?
Yes, Mayor and members of City Council, thank you. This is concerning the city's franchise agreement with Comcast for cable services. The city had an agreement that expired and we've been operating under the terms of the old agreement and we're in the process of starting to talk about what a new agreement would look like when we learned that there was a new model agreed to between Comcast and the Colorado Communications Utility Alliance. And for those who don't know, the city is a member of that organization. Mr. Feldman is the lawyer for that organizer. His, you know, his firm represents that and advises many municipalities on and members of the CCUA on these types of issues. And as part of its membership, the city has several hours to its credit of Mr. Feldman's services. And so to be a good steward of those city resources, we've enlisted the help of Mr. Feldman, also because he's really good at what he does. And so I will turn this over to Mr. Feldman to run this and answer your questions and see if we can make some progress on this matter. Ken?
Okay. Thank you, Kathy and Mayor and Council. Nice to see you. Mayor Proton Brown, nice to see you. It's been a while. Some of you I have worked with before. Then Councilmember Bloom, we worked together when you were on the Planning Commission. So, but some of you, this is the first time, so I appreciate the opportunity to work with the village on this issue. You see a name on your screen, Colleen McCroskey. Colleen is an associate in my law firm. And she works with me on local government and telecom issues. So she is observing tonight. She's a much younger lawyer than I am, so she has not been to nearly as many city council meetings. And I thought this would be a good opportunity for her to see how it works when we take the work product out of the office and present it to the people who need to live with it. What you have been provided in advance is an overview memo from us that kind of describes what the cable franchising process is, what we can do under federal law, what we can't do under federal and state law. Unfortunately, both the federal government and and the state government have preempted a lot of local authority in this area. I've been doing this stuff since the mid nineteen eighties. And I will tell you that we had much more authority in the mid nineteen eighties than we do today. One of the questions that always comes up, and I hate having to give this answer, but when when these kinds of issues come before elected bodies, most people are concerned more with internet services, broadband services, how fast are our speeds, how how affordable are these kinds of services? Obviously, the experiences of the last ten months or so have indicated how critically important it is for everybody to have good broadband connectivity. And equally, as unfortunately, going back to nineteen ninety-six, the Colorado General Assembly preempted local governments from requiring franchise agreements of any kind of telecommunications companies that want to use the public rights of way except for cable TV. And there's a long, boring story why they exempted cable, which we can get into if you are interested. But the bottom line is our authority here is to require Comcast or any other company that wanted to provide cable service, which is the packages of video programs over a wireline network that uses public rights of way to obtain a cable franchise. And as consideration for that, we can charge Comcast up to five percent of its gross revenues from the cable. So when they, you will note that one of the issues I highlighted in the memo was audits and definition of gross revenues. If you have been a Comcast subscriber or a subscriber of other companies, you know that oftentimes they bundle the internet service and the video service and possibly telephone service. You pay one price for a whole package in the bundle. When they calculate the franchise fees that they owe to the city, they have to allocate out what they attribute to the video portion of that package. And they pay five percent of those revenues, not of what the total that a subscriber pays for the bundle. And there are literally hundreds of different options that you can get from a big company like Comcast with packages of programming and numbers of channels and different speeds for internet. So it becomes a little bit complicated to try to stay on top of these things. And that's why we have this kind of language in cable franchise agreements. Just recently, in two thousand nineteen, the Federal Communications Commission came out with a ruling reinterpreting what the Cable Act meant as to what would be included in five percent of gross revenues for the maximum amount of franchise fees that can be charged. And they did so in a way that overturned thirty-five years of prior interpretations of the Cable Act. I have been doing this and fighting these issues at the FCC under Democratic administrations and Republican administrations. And they've been about equal since the mid eighties. And I will tell you that administrations of both parties until this last one never interpreted the Cable Act in the way that the last FCC did. But we are stuck with it now, which caused the CCUA group that Kathy mentioned, that Cherry Hills is a member of, to go back to Comcast and try to come up with some model language that we could use to effectuate the new lay of the land under that new FCC decision. That decision, by the way, is being challenged in federal court. The CCUA is one of many, many local governments and local government organizations that are challenging it. And we have language in a draft of a new franchise that Comcast has agreed to that basically says if we win, if we win, local governments win the court case, we can unilaterally go back and reestablish some of the regulatory authority that we used to have for thirty-five years and that the FCC took away from us in two thousand nineteen. So this is an ever-changing landscape, both in the fact that it over time limits local government authority more and more whenever Congress gets their hands on us. And and also we have to react to these FCC decisions that come up from time to time. You know, I think it may be that with that kind of an overview, that maybe the best use of of my time and your time tonight is to see what kind of questions you might have about the franchise draft that we have presented to you and the customer service standards. And I'll be happy to answer any questions I can for you.
Sure, we can start down the line. Kathy, do you have anything to add before we take questions?
No, I do think there's a couple of points that Mr. Feldman has pointed out in the draft agreement that we do want to be sure that we highlight to to get some direction on after we answer questions before we conclude tonight's session.
Okay, I'll come back to you then.
We, Mayor, real quick, can we actually hear what those highlights are? Because maybe that would invoke some questions or give us, you know, something to think about while we're discussing right now. Maybe we should go through those questions that you want answered now.
Sure. So the one key area that Kathy was referencing where we would like your feedback deals with access channels. The Cable Act allows local governments to require cable companies to provide bandwidth on the cable system for government access channels. There was a time when Cherry Hills Village had channel twenty-two on the cable system and provided a bunch of community-based programming that that was shown to local residents. I don't think we were broadcasting council meetings, but we were showing some other local-based programming over channel twenty-two. That stopped at some point. I'm not exactly sure when or why. It may have been around the time of the move into the new building. And I know that obviously we're on Zoom now. Public has access to council meetings over the internet. If you did want to have a cable channel so that you could produce your meetings over the internet as you do now, but also have a channel on the cable system, there are both some costs involved in being able to make the new building capable of handling that channel and some obligations that Comcast would have to put in the franchise in order to meet the cable needs of the community. So really, one of the issues was to kind of take all of your temperature on this point and find out, is there any interest in getting channel twenty-two or local cable channel that would be a Cherry Hills Village channel back on the Comcast cable system? And if if there is interest in that, then certain issues will flow from that.
Okay, we'll we'll put that question to each counselor as they ask questions about and get their feedback. Anything, another issue? Any other issues besides channel twenty-two that you wanted us to make sure we address?
That was really the major issue where we needed your feedback.
Well, let's go ahead now and then open it up and have the four, Councilwoman Blum, you have the floor. Al, you're muted.
I'm unmuted now. The question I got really is, how much revenue have we guarded each year based, because we've been operating under the old agreement? How much revenue are we talking about here?
Well, I see that Jessica is at the meeting, so she's probably in the best position to answer that.
Jessica, you can answer that?
Am I be thinking? She's not muted.
Yeah, I'm not hearing her.
Yeah, I'll text her off to the side.
Well, that's fine. That was my question. The other, you asked about whether we're interested in channel twenty-two, since that has been inoperative for the last many years. And when it was operated, I don't know if anybody watched it. So I don't think at least from my perspective, there is a lot of interest in enabling channel twenty-two. But my big question is really going to be budget-wise, what are we looking at in the past and what do we look at in the future as far as revenues for the city? I'll pass along the hand then.
So, Mr. Mayor, if I could, on the second part of Counselor Blum's question about what are we looking at in the future, I'd give you a couple of thoughts on that. Cable subscribers are going down in numbers. I have been saying for the last five to eight years, whenever I do one of these, I usually tell city councils that this may be your last cable franchise. I've been wrong when I think it's cable is going to disappear as we know it. But if you think about it, just the model of these big packages of video channels, most of which you never watch, that you pay ever-increasing numbers for. It just, there's, there really is not a future in that. And more and more programming is going online, more and more millennials and sometimes not millennials are cutting the cord and watching their video over internet connections. Cable will be around for a while, but we only get franchise fees on these cable packages. And at some point, cable television as we know it is going to go away. And when that happens, unfortunately, I can't identify for you an alternative source of revenue because frankly, we're preempted under under federal law in a little ways, but in a big way under state law from charging these companies for rent for the use of rights of way that they use public property to make a profit for their business. We can't charge unless it's cable TV. So when that revenue stream goes away, unfortunately, Chris and Jessica are going to have to come up with other sources of replacing that revenue that is not going to be easily found from the telecommunications industry unless Congress or the state legislature changes the law. So going forward, I think at some point, we have to plan for that phasing out and getting lower and lower.
To answer your question, so sorry, I was having microphone issues. In two thousand twenty, we collected a hundred and fifty-one thousand dollars. And looks like in two thousand nineteen, it was a hundred and forty-nine thousand, so right around a hundred and fifty thousand each year.
Thank you, Jessica.
All right, Councilperson Sheldon.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Feldman, for that report. Very informative. I guess I'll first start by saying I might be personally responsible for keeping Comcast in business. I am one of those few remaining hogs on the internet that are, I get a thousand channels and we watch like none of them. What what else are we, do we have other franchise agreements? And Ken, this may not be so much for you, but for for the city. Do we have other franchise agreements with telephone or other high-speed internet alternatives in our rights of way?
Yep, we actually don't. We have a franchise agreement for gas and electric. But the nineteen ninety-six legislation that our General Assembly passed in Denver basically preempted it. You know, I somewhat facetiously said there's a long, boring story as to why cable didn't get preempted, but these other telecom services did. And the short version is that everybody had a cable franchise at that point, and everybody was already receiving money from it. There had been a nineteen sixty-seven Supreme Court case in Colorado that had said you can't franchise telephone services anymore. So we couldn't do that as a result of that old decision. But for anything internet-related, I mean, it was nineteen ninety-six, we weren't even using the term broadband at that time. And I think the lobbyists for the industry wisely, working with the majority in the legislature, figured out that these future internet revenue streams were in the future. Nobody had them yet. If they tried to cut cable out, they would have had every mayor and council member in the state down there screaming about how they were cutting our local budgets. So they left cable alone. But they said for any of this other stuff that's coming, you cannot require a franchise. They don't need a franchise to be in the street. And you can't make them pay rent for that franchise fee to be in the street. So unfortunately, we are stuck unless and until our state legislature changes that policy.
Okay, so one follow-up question before I guess I tell you what I think about channel twenty-two. You did mention that there's a some kind of cost associated with re-engaging that channel and getting it back up and running. Roughly speaking, do we have any idea what that is?
Well, there's a couple of different elements of that cost. One would be to run a dedicated line to City Hall so that it could take the signal. You know, you have the cameras running in the at City Hall or at some location that you would load programming. Again, you wouldn't have to put council meetings on. You could if you wanted to. But some location where you would put in the programming and then send that signal off to the Comcast head end. There's a cost in installing that line. And until we were to ask Comcast, how much would it cost to put a line to this location? We wouldn't know. There would also be a cost to upgrade equipment when the city had cameras. I think it was their probably standard definition. We have high definition now, and there would be a cost of acquiring that. Now, those kind of capital expenditures, the Cable Act gives the city the authority to require Comcast to pay some of that. It also gives Comcast the ability to pass through government-imposed charges to its subscribers. So the city would impose a contractual obligation on Comcast, and it might say, we're going to make you build us this line, or we're going to make you give us X thousand dollars to buy upgraded equipment. And we would negotiate what that was. And then Comcast would turn around and start charging Cherry Hills Village residents. And if they ever got complaints about their bills, they would say, oh, your city is making us do this. So keep in mind that while technically those two things are separate, we're not making them. These are costs, the way I look at it, these are costs of doing business for a cable company. It's no different than paying salaries or buying health insurance for their employees or giving stock options to their corporate officers. Those all get built into your rate base. They're not a line item on the customer bill. But the federal law says if a government imposes the charge, you can put a line item on the bill. So it makes it look like the city is charging this extra fee that subscribers have to pay. So a little bit of a game there. We would have to do an evaluation. I would think, I've talked to some other cities that have not had peg channels before that have done startup. And I think for somewhere in the twenty-five to fifty-thousand-dollar range, you can get the kind of equipment you need to get up and running. And I have seen charges for those kind of return lines to a building where you want to have your, the city's end of the cable system be anywhere from five thousand dollars to a hundred thousand dollars, depending upon what they have in their infrastructure near City Hall right now and what they would have to install to upgrade it. So we'd have to check with Comcast and and get a dollar amount and then negotiate how much they were going to pay and how much they demanded we were going to pay. And then you could make an informed decision if there is even interest in considering it.
Yeah, okay. Well, thank you for that explanation. I, you know, my opinion about this has not changed with the with that information. I think we just recently spent upwards of over fifty thousand dollars putting in our current audiovisual system in City Hall to broadcast our signal out via Zoom and the internet, not Zoom, but through the internet. And in my opinion, I think it's it's working very satisfactorily. I've watched some of these reruns of some of our council meetings in the past. And I think people have the ability to log in and watch them live or go see them in the past. And I for one would not be in favor of re-engaging that channel twenty-two through Comcast. I'm I think that's, I think that's probably antiquated technology anymore.
Thank you, Councilperson Sheldon. Councilperson Gallagher.
Mr. Feldman, thank you very much for your overview. My, in answering your question and the feedback, the answer for me is echoing Councilwoman Blum, Councilperson Sheldon. And it was also confirmed, because I went to Laura. I was curious, you know, we have, to Dan's point, we have invested a lot of money on this infrastructure. And we've, we have our council meetings over YouTube. And I asked for a quick summary of the the number of views that we have. And in the last six meetings, we have had a high of fifty-six views and a low of seventeen. So here we have a community of twenty-five hundred families, and we're not getting a whole lot of purchase and interest in it. And so it further solidifies my thinking about channel twenty-two and that it's probably best left alone.
Thank you. Councilperson Brown?
I think you've already addressed, I had a quick question about those peg payments, and I think you just addressed all of that. My only other question was, I know that this is based on the new template that you have negotiated with Comcast. Are there any changes in this that are unique to Cherry Hills Village at this point? Or is this pretty much the the standard agreement that you've already negotiated?
Yeah, there aren't any that are particularly unique to the village. Since your last cable franchise, there have been updates to like the definition of gross revenues to come up with a broader scope of what can be charged, so that when we get five percent of the pie, we're getting five percent of a bigger pie, if you will. There, I mentioned there, there's upgrades to the language on audits to make sure the Comcast maintains the records we need them to keep if we ever need to audit the financial payments. The one thing that I've done a little bit was to talk to Jay about the city's rights of way code. There's a section in the franchise, it's section ten of the franchise that deals with permitting and basic entry into the rights of way and oversight by the city. That's one of those things that has always been in cable franchises, but really doesn't need to be if you have a good code. Because frankly, that's a police power. We don't have to negotiate police powers. The provisions for when you get a permit and how you dig in the streets should be the same whether you have a cable franchise like Comcast or whether you're a wireless company like Verizon or whether you're putting in fiber like Zayo or whether you're XL Energy for that matter. So so it may be that we are not going to need all of what is currently in the draft of section ten if the code is robust enough to cover it. But if we have it both in the code and in the franchise, then that's that's not really a big deal either. I just, my personal feeling, and it, different cities feel differently about it, is if it's in your code, you don't need it in the franchise, and council can change the code whenever you deem it best. So there's nothing unique to Cherry Hills Village here, but there are some differences. And I would suggest upgrades from the last Cherry Hills Village franchise.
There's my, I guess what I was getting at was that if you've kind of already negotiated this with them, there's nothing in this that they should look at and say, what? Like, this is something they will have seen before. So.
Yeah, it is for the most part. There's a, it's interesting when when staff scheduled this study session and and shared the information with Comcast, there was some reaction from our Comcast Government Affairs Representative, who I think was not sure at first what we were doing. And it was like, wait a minute, we haven't agreed to this yet. Are you okay with this? There might be some stuff in here that we don't agree with. And and I think Kathy explained to him that, no, this is just a study session. We're working off the CCUA model. There there are a couple of things in there that are unique dealing with the access channel, but that was because we didn't know how you were going to want to deal with the access channel. So I, you know, I may be missing something, and there may be something that he finds that he thinks is not part of this model agreement that Comcast has already agreed to. But I don't think there's going to be anything major. I think this should be a pretty easy, pretty quick process. And just so that you all understand where the model came, you know, again, about every ten years, Denver and Aurora do a new franchise, and they happen to come up around the same period of time. So you have, you know, the two monsters in the metro area, or at least the ones that have the most money to spend on flexing their muscles, trying to get the best deal that they can. Both Denver and Aurora are members of CCUA. And each time over the last couple of franchise iterations, after Denver and Aurora get finished, then the CCUA has looked at and said, let's come up with a model based on what Denver and Aurora just did, so that our smaller communities don't have to spend the same kind of money negotiating this from scratch. And the understanding is it may be that a hundred percent of this works for you. It may be that eighty-five percent of it works for you, and you have fifteen percent local issues. But most of the time, we don't have to spend the money to reinvent the wheel. And that's really the kind of document we're working with here.
All right, thanks. And then as far as the access channel goes, I would concur. I think we really struggled when we did have it to find programming. And I don't think that has gotten any better. You know, we could do council meetings, that's a few hours every other week. And then what? So I don't think that is, I don't think we need that.
Thank you. Councilperson Wheel?
There we go. Yeah, as long as we're on channel twenty-two. Did we receive any negative feedback when it went off the air? Anybody aware of anything?
From what I, go ahead, whoever was going to speak.
It was Laura.
Thanks, this is Laura. We had a couple of comments. We had one woman who was upset that we weren't changing the programming as often when it was on the air. And so when it went off the air, she commented on it. And then a certain former mayor who loved channel twenty-two was a little disappointed that it was off the air.
Okay, well, interesting. Yeah, I don't, I don't have strong feelings because I think we have a great solution for the city council meetings. And if we were interested in doing some programming specific to Cherry Hills Village, it would seem to me we could post it to YouTube and point people in that direction if if it if it was desired.
You're muted, Randy.
No.
Now you're good. Okay.
Okay.
Yeah, lean closer.
Okay, I guess.
Yeah, it doesn't feel like a natural act to try and fill up, you know, hours of programming. What are the major differences in this agreement versus the last agreement? The, well, I've mentioned some of them. The definition of gross revenues is broader. There is more robust language in the audit section. There is a section that implements this recent FCC order that gives the city the right to change it back to the way it used to be if we win the court case or if Congress changes the law. There's another section in the franchise, it's section two point six called competitive equity. It used to be that we had language in cable franchises that was called level playing field. Some of you that have done a lot of works with contracts know what level playing field language is. Basically said, if another company wants to come in, you got to give them the same deal that you gave us. The FCC preempted any level playing field clauses because they said it inhibited competition. They said when the first cable company came in, you would impose obligations on them, like you have to serve the whole city. But when a new company But when a new company is going to come in now years later, and they don't have any market share yet, it may not be fair to impose the same kind of obligations as your incumbent has on a new competitor and we want to incent competition. So the FCC preempted level playing field language. What cable companies came up with, I'm probably, I, I don't want to use the wrong adjective, creatively came up with was this concept called competitive equity, which I call reverse level playing field. It basically says if somebody else wants to provide cable service in Cherry Hills Village, you can give them a franchise, you can give them whatever terms and conditions you want. They don't have to be like ours. But if we think that you gave them a better deal than what we have, we can come back to the city and force you to amend our franchise to give us the better deal. So to me, that is just as much of a disincentive to competition as level playing field language was, but they've gotten away with it at the FCC so far. The FCC hasn't, has not overturned that. So we have language in the franchise now that we didn't used to have the talks about if, if a new company comes in and a couple of years ago CenturyLink went around a lot of the South Metro suburbs. I don't think they got to Cherry Hills, but they did get franchises in Centennial and Littleton and a couple of other places. And they got competitive agreements. And if that were to happen and Comcast were to believe that they got a better deal somewhere, they could come back and say, well, they got more advantageous terms, so you should amend our franchise. And the language on competitive equity creates a process to negotiate what those are, doesn't require same exact conditions. And it gives the city a little bit of flexibility to say, well, maybe they have easier conditions on these topics, but they're doing more than you guys are doing on these topics and you can't pick and choose which ones you want. It has to be fair, you know, competitively equitable as a whole, not section by section. So that's language that we didn't used to have in, in franchise agreements. The insurance language has been updated because the Colorado Governmental Immunity Act has been updated. And obviously costs have changed and the amount of coverage that we would require to protect the city is different today than it was ten years ago. So those are the kind of things that have changed.
Okay. Let me ask you a question about streaming. More specifically, I'm a Comcast customer. And as a Comcast customer, I can rent set top boxes, have them on my television set. I can have a service that's Xfinity streaming. And in effect, have television programming over the internet, over the internet, and yet through a coaxial cable to my house, which I can broadcast all through my house. What, what happens? I'm not sure whether it's the media, like is it the physical cable? Or is it, you know, because you're getting programming and it's over a cable, but it's streaming, so it's kind of over the internet. What, what is it that we're actually, what are the boundaries?
All right. So we're going to get, it's a great question. We're going to get into the weeds a little bit. I'm going to try not to put everybody to sleep. The definition of a cable system in the federal law is the infrastructure that provides the cable service. And the cable service is the packages of video programming available over a cable system. And, and we are allowed to require a franchise and charge franchise fees on revenues from cable packages, right, cable services, packages of video that are delivered over a system that the cable company owns or controls that use the rights of way. So the best way for me to explain that is to say, if you just have Comcast internet and you have Netflix, Netflix does not, is not a cable service, it's packages of programming. But it is not over a system that they own or control that uses the rights of way. You're using somebody else's broadband service to get that Netflix content into your house. Comcast, because they provide the, the traditional cable package over the wire, but you can also use their internet service to stream some of those packages to other parts of your house. Frankly, or to your iPad if you're not in your house. That Comcast has said the revenues that they receive for that, they're going to consider part of the cable revenues and they're going to pay franchise fees on it because it's too intertwined, I think, with the traditional cable. I think that's their position today. Periodically, they come talk to the CCWA group about how they are interpreting these issues. And every time you hear from them, they say, that doesn't mean we might not change how we interpret it in the future. And of course, when they make those kinds of decisions, these are big time decisions that happen in the corporate office in Philadelphia. And the people that we're talking to really don't have a say in that. But I think because it's so intertwined right now, they try to avoid the problem of figuring out, can we separate some of this? So we can say these revenues don't get counted as cable. I think all that video stuff that you get as a Comcast subscriber, both the streaming and the traditional cable package, they consider as cable revenues.
Great. That sounds good. Well, and that gives me some comfort that this may not be dying all that fast, all that soon because you know, if, if, I understand that Netflix would be outside of this. On the other hand, if it's an, if it's a Comcast service, Xfinity in particular, coming over the cable, it sounds like it's still, we still would receive a revenue from that package and that's, that could go on for a while.
It, it could. I, I don't know that I want to give any of my friends in Philadelphia any ideas, but they've probably already thought of this. I suppose at some point in the future, as we know, it goes away. Comcast is a broadband company providing internet service. And they have a subsidiary that provides the internet service. And then they have a separate entity that provides the video packages. And then they make the argument that those things are really, you know, now we're just like Hulu and Netflix. And we don't have to pay a fee on those video services. And I, I'm just hoping I'll be retired by the time that argument comes up and Colleen will be dealing with it and she'll be able to answer the question for you.
If I was in corporate America, I'd do exactly the same thing. So I understand your, your point because it's a disadvantage to them versus other streaming services. To the burden with the. What do, back on the twenty-two issue, other cities, most of them have abandoned our size. Have most of them kind of abandoned this, this whole local access channel business?
You know, I, I see it as somewhat mixed. There are a lot of cities the size of the village that don't have it. There are some that are, you know, maybe a little bit bigger that do, but that have been doing it for years and had been broadcasting council meetings. And now they see, well, we've got to buy these cameras and we're going to use it to put our signal out on YouTube. And we're using those same cameras to just run it over the cable channel. And now regardless of what the citizen has and how they want to watch it, it just provides a different way that they can watch it. Some of the larger communities, most of the larger communities in the metro area have a government access channel. In, I don't, I never knew why Cherry Hills was channel twenty-two. I think that was legacy from an earlier cable company. Most of the Comcast cities these days in the metro area are all on channel eight, their own channel eight. So if you're in channel eight in Littleton, you can watch the Littleton council meetings. If you're in channel eight in, in Aurora, you can watch the Aurora council meetings. So where, where I see smaller communities doing more robust access is actually in the rural areas where they feel like there's not as much local coverage. I mean, the best example I can give, we've used this at the FCC a lot of times when we're arguing for the benefits of local access channels is Durango. When they had, when the river got polluted with the mine discharge a few years ago, and then nobody had water for a while. Their chat, their version, their government access channel, that's channel ten in Durango was the primary source of local news on that. When they had the fire, the four sixty-one, I forget what it was called, fire a couple of years ago, frankly, the Forest Service was using the Durango government channel as one of their primary sources of getting the word out to people as to what was closed and what was open and when people could go back to their homes. So that's kind of an extreme example of when it's, it's really important to do that. I mean, there are a whole bunch of great examples of ways that governments, even small governments have used access channels. Well, I think Lafayette has an access channel, Louisville has an access channel. Erie has an access channel. So I mean, there's some, I don't know the populations of everybody's community, but the, some of the, you know, middling to smaller sized municipalities in the metro area still do it, but those communities have been doing it for a while. And I know that just for, again, for reasons that came about before my involvement with Cherry Hills Village, their, you know, city council meetings were not on the air. That's usually those kind of anchor show that most of these other communities have when they do use a government access channel.
Okay. Thanks for it. Thanks very much for that.
Thank you, Counselor Wheel. Counselor Sopavy?
Thank you, Mr. Philman, for answering all the questions, for the information. That was very helpful. I think Randy asked all the questions, so there's none left for anybody else. But thank you again. I think I'm going to be saving a couple hundred dollars on my cable bill now after listening to this conversation.
Tell, tell Comcast.
Well, this is recorded, so they're going to listen to this.
They're watching.
Thank you again. This was very informative. And as an end user, I never knew there was so much involved with this and looking at this packet, that was, that was, that was very nice. And I think I agree with everybody else. I would say no to channel twenty-two. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Sopavy. Ken, I have one question for you about the, the agreement. It's paragraph ten fourteen A. I wonder about your kind of interpretation of that. And let me, I can read it slowly here. It says.
I'm pulling, I'm pulling it up as you're speaking, Mayor.
Ten fourteen A.
Got it. Okay, undergrounding.
When required by general ordinances, grantees cable system should be placed underground at grantees' expense. I understand it to there. Unless funding is generally available for such relocation to all users of the rights of way. So I guess my question is hypothetically, suppose our council says we want to spend five million to underground Excel, have Excel put its some power lines underground. Is that, how does that? How does this language affect that? If we say the money is just for Excel to underground, are we, are we safe or is that generally available? What does that mean?
Yeah, that, that would probably create some problems. We, we have a state law, I'm trying to remember how old this law is, it's probably ten to fifteen years old. That basically made it tougher for local governments to require undergrounding for aesthetic purposes. If there was a public safety reason for undergrounding, that it doesn't apply. But, you know, basically said the government's got to pay or you can create a special improvement district to benefit, you know, be paid by the properties who are directly benefited if you're going to require undergrounding. So we used to have this language that said, if we have a public project and we want you to go underground, you're going to go underground. The cable companies pushed back, this is national, not just Comcast in Colorado, and said, look, if everybody goes underground, we'll go underground. But, you know, we don't want to be the only ones left up on the pole if somebody else goes. And then they said, well, sometimes there's funding available. So if there's funding available, we want to share in that. And one of the things they used to point out was the one percent undergrounding fund that we have in Excel franchises. Well, that one percent fund is just for Excel. It cannot, under PUC tariff, be used for anything else. So that resulted in the language that says funding generally available to all users. So if you were to do an Excel project now and you're using the undergrounding funds, that's exclusive to Excel. But if the city was budgeting general fund monies to do an citywide or partial city undergrounding project, you pretty much would have to come up with something, something equitable for all of the utilities who are being impacted by it. That's, that's my understanding of the state law without going back and looking at it.
I'll join in on channel twenty-two too. I think I agree with what's been said about that. I don't, I don't think it was, we did have problems, as I recall, getting programming. It was, it was looping programming, the same thing over and over again. Sometimes we get kind of the butt of jokes around town, but it wasn't, it was very difficult, I think, to keep fresh. And, and I do think that the YouTube is a great solution because it allows time shifting and people to go on wherever they want to to see it. So that's been a real boon. And I think we have a lot more people watching council meetings on YouTube than we ever had watching through channel twenty-two. I think that's it. Thanks, Ken. I think that was a great presentation. And are there any other comments or any other questions that you'd like us to answer? Kathy or Ken?
Mayor, I've got a question on the lighter side for Ken. Can we make a requirement in the Comcast agreement? Do they make a deal with Cronky so we're, so we can watch Nugget and Avon?
Oh, boy. Counselor, from your mouth to God's ears, I have been, I have been poking my friends at Comcast about that. I'm a huge basketball and hockey fan. And my son works for Altitude Sports Radio. If you had listened to the Nuggets beat the Lakers on the radio the other night, you could have listened to my son do the post game show. So I've been, I've been bugging my son about, of course, he's nowhere near in the Cronky organization in a position to resolve that. That's one of those unfortunate things and it's happening all over the country with these multi-billion dollar media companies arguing over, you know, what's really pennies. It's probably hundreds of thousands of dollars to them, but in the big picture, it's pennies. And, and subscribers and sports fans are suffering. So I share your pain.
Also on a light note, do you have any cruises planned for the near future?
Oh.
Those of you didn't, wasn't that you that I saw on the news last March or whatever it was?
Yes, it was. All right. Well, I know you, you've got ten or fifteen minutes before your council meeting. I won't take up all of that time, but for those of you who are wondering what the mayor pro tem is referring to, my wife and I were on a South American cruise in March. And I will tell you that the first two weeks of our, what was supposed to be a three week trip was wonderful and fabulous. We sailed around Cape Horn from the Chilean side to the, the east side. But after March thirteenth, the world shut down and no one would let us in. And rather than get off the ship and fly home from Argentina on the nineteenth, we had a sail back to the United States. And after a week leaving Argentina, we had people who were sick on our ship and we all got quarantined in our rooms. It was a massive cluster of terrible communications from the cruise line. People like Chief Tovray and Chris and Kathy and I have been trained in crisis communications and you always learn to communicate more as opposed to less in a crisis. Even if you're telling people, we don't know, and we'll get back to you in a few hours and let you know if we know anything more. And we were not hearing anything from the cruise line. They weren't, we learned that people had died on our ship on social media six hours before the captain told us. And then when we finally got back to Florida, first they told us we were going to Fort Lauderdale. There was another COVID infected ship that got to Fort Lauderdale a couple of days before us. We thought they're going to get all the rules set and then we'll skate in behind them. We got there and they said, we're changing the rules and we don't want you here. And then we went to Miami and we sat in the port in Miami for four days while our inept federal government tried to figure out what the rules were going to be to get people off the ship. So my three week trip turned into a five and a half week trip. And when I finally arrived home, both my wife and I were just run ragged from the tension and the trauma of it. And we thought, well, we just need a few days to sleep this off. And three days later, we both had the virus. So.
Well, I didn't know that part.
I, you know, Katie, I feel, I'm so, sorry, I'm, I should be more formal. I, I, I figured you didn't know that part because you were smiling when you asked the question. But look, I, I would tell you in hindsight, we were ill. March, April and May and part of June are a blur. It was not easy running a business at this point. Thank God I have a good partner and an office manager who knew what a PPP loan was while I was stuck in quarantine on a ship. But I, as bad as it was, we both recovered. We didn't have symptoms as bad as a lot of people did. We didn't have to go to the hospital. We don't have lingering symptoms like a We didn't have to go to the hospital. We don't have lingering symptoms like a lot of people you hear about. And, you know, it just could have been a lot worse. And I, I think the only way to look at it is we're incredibly grateful that we didn't have it worse and my family is safe. And, and I'm trying to focus on the happy times of, you know, I had the best wine tour I ever went on in Chile when we were there. So I can recommend that to you when we start traveling again, but. Never got to see Argentina other than Tierra del Fuego down at the tip of the continent. So.
Obviously, I'm glad that you're okay. And, and when I saw that, I just thought, oh goodness.
I was somehow, I don't know how it got picked up. There was a reporter that wrote a story about it in Florida and it was wrong. And I sent her a note and corrected some of the facts. And then she said, great, I'll change it. Can I use your name? And then my name was in circulation. I started, you know, Fox News in New York and NBC News and Channel 9 here in Denver. And for a while I was all for that because I felt like no one was listening to us. Frankly, you know, thank God for Michael Bennett's office and Ed Perlmutter's office because. We got more information from them about what was happening to us than we got from the cruise line. We found out when we were going home, the night before we left from Michael Bennett's office. The cruise line didn't tell us till the next morning at six o'clock in the morning. And Bennett's office got it from the cruise line. So it was frustrating. I was just trying to get the word out as much as we could. And, but then we were feeling so uncomfortable. We ran out of medication. We weren't feeling well. We were probably getting sick at the time. And, and every time, you know, you call the press, can we do a four o'clock interview? And then they call you back at 3:30 and say, I gotta push it back to five and. And it just got too frustrating. I don't want to talk about it anymore. So it was like this. You know, it's important to be talking about this publicly. And then I said, I'm not talking to anybody else. I just want to go home and go to bed. So that's what happened.
Oh, man. Well, I'm glad that you're all right. Thank you for your help on this.
Thank you, Mr. Philman. Appreciate it. I think that concludes our study session. Kathy?
I would like to just ask Mr. Philman on the note of communication to talk to council about process where we might come here.
Good idea. Sorry, I shouldn't have rambled on about my.
That's what I'm here for.
Next steps. So we are going to take this draft. We're going to make some modifications to it based upon your direction. We will send it to Nick Jimenez, who is our Comcast representative. And suggest that if he has any concerns with any of the issues that he get in touch with us. We'll talk about it. It may take a meeting or two. I really don't think it's going to take that much longer. And I would suspect that, you know, giving some time for trying to coordinate schedules. If we do have to get a meeting or two put together that by the end of March, beginning of April, we should have a document to recommend to you for adoption.
Via ordinance, right?
Right. It has to be adopted by ordinance and you will have to have a public hearing, but we usually have public hearings on ordinances. The federal law requires a public hearing, but it's, it allows whatever your standard form is. That's what we use.
Very good. All right, it's, I have it 6:23 or 6:24, I guess. We'll take a couple of minutes break and then be back on at 6:30.
Okay, thank you all.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr.
Take care.
Laura?
Yes.
Am I louder?
Yeah, I can definitely hear you better.
Okay, thank you.
Did you change something?
Um, I went into my settings and changed my mic. I bumped it up a little bit, so it was mostly up. So I just turned it all the way up.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, Jessica, you, you sound great now.
Way better. Okay. I'll leave it where it's at then. Thank you.
Eric, do you want to check your audio real quick?
Sure. Can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Great.
I'm just going to mute you until audience participation time, if that's all right.
Perfect. Thank you.
Thanks.
All right, I have 6:30. Laura, are we ready to go?
Yes, if everyone's back.
I'll go ahead and call to order the meeting of the city council of Cherry Hills Village for Tuesday, February 16th, 2021. It's now 6:30. This is a regular meeting. And if we could have a roll call, please, a member.
Counselor Safavi?
Here.
Counselor Wheel?
Glad to be here.
Counselor Brown?
Here.
Counselor Gallagher?
Here.
Counselor Sheldon?
Here.
Counselor Blum?
All right, all are present. First item on the agenda is the fun item and our call on Sergeants Parker and Stremel.
Mayor Stewart, members of the city council, as you indicated, my name is Sergeant Chuck Parker and I joined here tonight. By Sergeant Eric Stremel, by John Reynolds, our support service supervisor. And we're also addressing you tonight on behalf of two other patrol sergeants who cannot be with us, Sergeant Noah Rolfing and Sergeant Kirk Wood. We'd like to also, before we begin with this very brief presentation, thank Mr. Chris Kramer, our city manager, for allowing us. To briefly address you to this evening. Mr. Mayor, as we all have faced many challenges during this period of pandemic. We come to you tonight to publicly thank Chief Michelle Tovray. For her servant leadership and the care that she has shown to the employees of the police department. We wanted you to know of our gratitude to Chief Tovray. Over the past several months, Chief Tovray has worked tirelessly to ensure. That members of the police department received, some are still currently receiving their COVID vaccinations. The chief has worked with several vaccination providers. To provide care for her employees who are most at risk, obviously because of the work that we do. Additionally, she has ensured that temperatures are taken at the beginning of every shift for all employees. She has made arrangements to limit the personnel in the building, especially on our overlap days. Limiting potential exposure and provided us through the city the necessary PPE that we've needed. It would be quite easy for a small department such as ours to kind of fall through the cracks. When the vaccination rolled out. But because of Chief Tovray's leadership, that didn't happen. She made sure her staff was vaccinated and was following best practices for all of us to stay safe. So the first line supervisors wanted the city council to know. That on behalf of the entire department, we're indebted to Chief Tovray for her support. And her care of her employees and really in turn the citizens of Cherry Hills Village. So Chief Tovray, we are grateful to you and we thank you. And Mr. Mayor and city council, we're grateful to you for letting us speak to you briefly tonight. So thank you.
Thank you, Sergeant Parker.
Thank you.
Applause for our chief. Thank you, chief. Job well done.
I want to just, if I could for a second, thank, thank the chief. She has been a true leader and that's what times like this we bring out. I also want to thank the supervisors and the sergeants. For recognizing that leadership, which is in a way is its own form of leadership. And so, you know. It could not be more proud and, and just delighted with really the professionalism. That the entire department is exhibiting. So bravo, hats off and on behalf of me, thank you.
It's a very impressive bunch you have there, Chris. Top to bottom.
Sometimes you, sometimes you luck into it and just inherit it. So.
Chief, you have, you have the floor. Would you like to say something?
I don't know. I'm usually not very speechless, as you all know. That's very, very humbling and quite unexpected. And I, I could guess I would tell these gentlemen, I shall see you tomorrow. I would just like to say that no good organization is successful without it being a team. I can't possibly do what people want us to do by myself. I, I never do it by myself. I have a staff that understands our mission and understands expectations and. You know, really, I, I, I'm just, I'm very, very proud to be the chief at Cherry Hills and I've said that for. For almost nine years now. So thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Thank you, chief, for all you do. And please give our best to all of your staff and officers and sergeants. Appreciate it.
I sure will. Thank you.
Move on to the next agenda item, which is audience participation. I believe we have Laura, one sign up?
Yes, correct. Mr. Jamrich.
Mr. Jamrich.
Mr. Jamrich, you're still muted.
Need to unmute.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak. As a member of the public, the last city council meeting provided interesting insights into the workings of the council. I and others thought that it was unusual to see council members upset that the mayor was writing his opinions in a column titled The Mayor's Report. In reading the column, I was surprised at how little opinion there was. To me, it seemed that the mayor simply laid out the facts and should be commended for this. The facts with regard to Quincy Farm. Quincy Farm is not a financial asset, no matter who holds title to it. The conservation easement, which can be broken, limits the uses of the property and presents. I'm sorry, presents the title holder with financial liabilities in terms of maintenance and restoration of the property. The city currently does not have the financial resources to meet these liabilities. Those who objected to the mayor's opinions did not present any alternative information or an alternative plan. What was brought up was that the village's master plan calls for the accumulation of more open space. But does the master plan call for the accumulation of land without regard to cost? Doesn't the easement maintain the open space without regard to who holds the title? And what are the actual costs for restoration and maintenance of the structures, the pond and the additional improvements? Surely that number must be out there. Surely the city wouldn't take on the financial liability with under, without understanding its extent. Wouldn't that number be important to the RFP and to the taxpayer who may in the end foot the bill? The Anderson family proposal pledged to maintain the property in the spirit of and to the letter of the easement. It would have reduced the village's liabilities. As a neighbor and a taxpayer, I believe this was a desirable solution. It's not clear to me what more the city council was looking for, but I guess we'll see. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. Damage. Appreciate your, your participation. I believe we have agenda item five, no more reports from city boards, commissions or committees. Is that correct, Laura?
Correct.
So next item is 6A, the consent agenda. Approval minutes?
Oh, sorry. I moved to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion of seconds, like a roll call.
Counselor Safavi?
Yes.
Counselor Wheel?
Yes.
Counselor Brown?
Yes.
Counselor Gallagher?
Yes.
Counselor Sheldon?
The, the minutes were well done. Thank you, Laura. Yes.
Yes, thank you. Counselor Blum? Counselor Blum, you're still muted.
Yes.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you all. That's Pat, the consent agenda item, the minutes are approved. Moving on to the next agenda item 99A, Council Bill 1, series 2021, to rezone a parcel of land owned by Denver First Church of the Nazaree. Located at the 3500 block of South Monroe Street from R1. To R4 and demanding the official zoning map consistent therewith. And this is first reading. And I believe we'll have Senior Planner Workman.
We know it.
No, I'm, I'm here. Trying to get my screen shared here. Can you all see my screen?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, perfect. Good, good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of city council. As was just mentioned, this item on your agenda is the first. Good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of city council. As was just mentioned, this item on your agenda is the first reading of an ordinance for a request made by Denver First Church of the Nazarene to rezone property from an R one, two-and-a-half-acre residential district designation to an R four, half-acre residential district designation. There we go. The subject property is located at the southwest corner of East Hampton and South Monroe Street. It's roughly three point three acres in size. To the north is Hamden Avenue with city and county of Denver beyond. To the east is the Denver First Church of the Nazarene Church facility. To the south is single-family detached homes, known as the Covington neighborhood. To the west is the High Line Canal with single-family homes beyond, known as the Devonshire neighborhood. Please note for council that the approval of this council bill on first reading does not approve or indicate approval of the requested rezoning at second reading. The approval on first reading will simply set the date of the future public hearing and second reading consistent with allowing an applicant the requisite process and hearing opportunity provided for in the municipal code. It's also noted that contemporaneously, with the public hearing on the rezoning ordinance, city council will consider associated applications for a site plan amendment and a preliminary plat. With that, staff recommends that city council approve Council Bill One, series two thousand and twenty-one, a bill for an ordinance of the city of Cherry Hills Village to rezone a parcel of land owned by Denver First Church of the Nazarene, located in the thirty-five-hundred block of South Monroe Street from R one to R four, and amending the official zoning map consistent therewith on first reading, and set the public hearing and second reading for March second, two thousand and twenty-one, at that city council meeting. That would conclude staff's presentation. However, if there are any questions, certainly happy to try and answer those.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that. Instead of going down the line, since this is only first reading and we're simply putting it on the radar for us, and all the presentation will be at our next meeting, I'll just open it up. Does anybody have any questions for? Senior Planner?
I've got a comment, Mayor, if I may.
Yes.
My only comment is, I want us all to remember, I want citizens watching this and the applicant and their consultants to remember that. And I know that Mr. Workman mentioned this, but approving this at first reading tonight, in order for us to hear the entire presentation in a couple of weeks, on the second of March, we need to approve it tonight in order to hear the full presentation. We don't get to hear the full presentation under our new code and the way we process these without approving it tonight. I just don't want there to be any presumption that an approval tonight, if it were to get approved to go to second reading unanimously, is going to be equal to a unanimous approval of any, and this is more of a general comment, really, not so much to our applicant, because this is a new policy for us to be doing it this way. This is the first land use application that's coming through in front of us, going through this way, where we're setting the date at first reading. So I can just tell you that if I'm an applicant and I hear it get approved at first reading unanimously, and then there's consternation at a second hearing and maybe not a unanimous consent or maybe even a denial, I'm going to be looking back going, wait a minute, whoa, the city councils approved this unanimously at first reading, and now they're saying no now or no, there's, you know, two no votes or three or four no votes. Just pointing out to all of us, to our listeners, and to the applicant that this is our first land use application coming in this way. So first time we're doing this, and in order for us to even hear what you have to say at the second reading, we have to approve it tonight in order to hear it. So I think I've said enough. Hopefully that resonates with you. That's all. Thank you.
Yeah, thanks for that, Counsel Sheldon. That's correct. And the point here is, we don't want to have, we're not having any public input now. We aren't having a public hearing. We're not hearing any evidence. We don't know anything about the matter, really. But we don't want to hear it twice. We don't want to do it tonight and then again in March second. So that's a reason for our policy. We do it once. So that's why we do it, and that's why most jurisdictions follow this procedure as well. So I think. Any other comments or questions for our staff? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
I move to approve Council Bill One, series two thousand and twenty-one, a bill for an ordinance of the city of Cherry Hills Village to rezone a parcel of land owned by Denver First Church of the Nazarene, located in the thirty-five-hundred block of South Monroe Street from R one, two-and-a-half-acre residential to R four, one-half-acre residential, and amending the official zoning map consistent therewith on first reading, and set the public hearing and second reading for the March second, March second, two thousand and twenty-one city council meeting.
Second.
We have a motion by Counsel Brown and a second by Counsel Gallagher. Is there any further discussion? Anybody have anything they'd like to be recognized to discuss? Hearing, no discussion. I can act, Laura, let's take a roll call vote, please.
Counselor Safavi?
Yes.
Counselor Wheel?
Yes.
Counselor Brown?
Yes.
Counselor Gallagher?
Yes.
Counselor Sheldon?
Yes.
Counselor Blum?
Yeah.
Okay, that passes unanimously. We will then hear that public presentation in March, a public hearing in March. Um, new business, nine B on the agenda, Board and Commission Member Terms, and City Clerk Gillespie, please. You have the floor.
Members of the city council, staff is seeking direction from council on several Board and Commission Member Terms tonight that are coming up for reappointment. We have one on the BOA, two on PTRC, and we have a current vacancy and an upcoming vacancy on the Art Commission, so we are seeking to council members to review applications for those positions. We are soliciting applications in the crier on the website, all of our usual places. But for reappointments, Steve Elkin on the BOA, Stephanie Dahl and Chelsea Scott on PTRC are all interested in being reappointed.
Okay, do we have any, so just like, I'm clear that we have one in BOA, and these are open ones, Laura? One in BOA, two in PTRC, and two in arts?
So we have two, we have a vacancy on the Art Commission, and then Kathy Minger does not wish to be reappointed, so we will have another vacancy in May on the Art Commission. The other three positions, BOA and PTRC, those members would like to be reappointed. So staff is seeking council's direction on their reappointments.
Okay, so it's really just the Arts Commission that has some new openings for us?
Unless council decides to open, unless council would like to solicit applications for any of the other positions.
I did have a question about the Mr. Elkin. I know that the BOAA doesn't meet that often, and we have had challenges, you know, we have to have a quorum. I think PTRC was the one where, I'm sorry, Planning and Zoning was the commission where we really had that issue to address. And so I'm, when the attendance is one of four meetings, were those four meetings that were actually held, or were those meetings?
Those were actually held, yeah.
So of the four meetings that have happened in the last two and a half years, he was only able to attend one.
Correct.
Maybe I can chime in. I chatted with Carrie about this because, well, first I wanted to have Carrie's opinion as well as my own on on Steve, and how did he feel about Steve as a commission board member? And Carrie was, you know, fine, thought he was a contributor. Fact, you know, and Carrie pointed it out, they've actually only had one meeting together over the past, what, this is about two and a half years. So not a lot of exposure, but I think a good guy. The opinion, I mean, the issue of attendance really jumped off the page at me, too, because we have meetings that will have lawyers and architects and all kinds of other people there, and as a city, we have to be staffed up, if you will, and able to function at these meetings. So my plan was, after talking to Carrie, I didn't have a chance to call Steve, but I would like to chat with him and just make sure that, you never know, when you have four meetings, statistically insignificant number in some respects, and he may have had deaths in the family and other things, you know, that that could have happened, it's a very small number. But I think that pointing out that attendance is very important, and we would hope that, to the extent we have meetings, you know, that he can bring his percentage a little higher, a lot higher. Because I know our threshold was seventy-five percent, and we're obviously way short of that. Okay, that's all I have to add.
And Randy, has, did Carrie speak to Steve?
Well, he was a little uncomfortable about doing that, because the last time we did that, it was an unhappy situation. The board member was offended, took offense, not because of the way Carrie presented it or any of the rest of it. But so we agreed I would talk to, talk to Steve.
You know, just for context, as Kitty and I, over the years, have interviewed a lot of these people for these different boards and commissions, and one of the common threads that became really clear is we were trying to decipher, is this a good match to have this person continue going forward, was attendance. And it's, you know, you watch their feet, you know, not their lips, and I would argue with you that we, before we approved Mr. Elkin, that we either, one, have a really strong commitment from him to attend, or we open it up for other possible members.
Yeah, I think that's fair. If I'd have been a little more organized, I would have gotten, chatted with him myself before this meeting and been able to clear that up, but I haven't. And I think, yeah, we can hold off on his reappointment until I have a chance to chat with him and make sure we're on the same page.
Let me chime in also. Randy and I did the interview. We were impressed with him at that time. I don't know what those circumstances are, why the attendance was so low, but I think very important, as Mike pointed out, Randy, you meet with him and see what his commitment is, and if it's, you know, if the commitment's there, then we can talk about it. But if it's something else, that he's committed to other things, then I think I agree with Mike that we would then need to open it up despite his impression to both of us when we interviewed him.
Yep, I'm a hundred percent in agreement. Happy to, happy to take the ball and chat with them and report back in a couple of weeks.
Laura, do we have other, do we have a list going of potential BOAA prospective members?
We do keep applications for two years per our policy. I haven't looked back to see if we have any from the past two years.
Al, when you did your last interview, do you remember if you had more than, more than just Steve?
I think Randy and I, I think there were three interviews at that time, but that goes back to two and a half years. So I don't know if Laura kept those. If you do, then.
Yeah, I just looked. We don't have any from the past two years.
Okay.
No, but we haven't.
We did have three applicants, I think.
Yeah, we haven't solicited again, and, you know, I mean, the clock would have been up on keeping the applications. So I, you never know, right? But it was popular enough back then. If we needed to go back to the well, I think we could find somebody.
You know, I think you made a great point, Randy. I think it was you that said this, that, you know, sometimes these, as seldom as they occur, sometimes these BOA meetings end up with a lot of consultant team in the room trying to make their argument to the Board of Adjustment and to not have a full host of board there, and got to be terrible if you didn't have a quorum there. But how many members are on the Board of Adjustment?
There's five, but then there's the plus one of myself. So if we have an absence, I more or less sub in as a voting member. Otherwise, I don't vote. So I don't think we've had a problem in terms of not having a forum, not being able to make a decision. But when we have people, you know, if we had several people say that we're attending at twenty-five percent, that obviously would become more of a challenge for us. So we, attendance is important.
All right. Well, I think it's a great idea to reach out to him and check to see if he's got the ability to to commit and try to decipher whether or not that is a real commitment. I know it's a hard question to ask of you, but I also would not be opposed to going back out and seeing if there's interest amongst the community.
Well, let me get the feedback, and let me understand the circumstances as well, because every once in a while, there certainly are really legitimate reasons, but then there are other circumstances. You know, I travel an enormous amount on my job, and I'm out of town all the time. Well, you know, that's.
This may not be the right position for you, then.
Exactly.
Okay, well, great. Counselor, can you report back to us then, next meeting? What's the council's sense on PTRC?
I'm fine.
Go ahead, Katie.
I just, I'm fine with PTRC. I think Chelsea is relatively new, and Stephanie is currently serving as the chair, and I think has done a great job at that, so.
I would agree.
No problem.
Yep, I'm good.
I sense unanimous consent there for that one. And then finally, the arts.
So you need two council members to help with Art Commission appointments?
I can help with that.
I'm happy to.
So Mayor Proton Brown and Counsel Gallagher will do that, and I work with Laura. Are we going to publish that then in the crier, Laura? The opening?
I'm sorry, what?
Will we publish then the opening in the crier?
Yes, the Art Commission for sure, and then we'll hold off on BOA. We'll wait to hear back from Counselor Wheel on that in a while. But for sure, our commission will be, will be soliciting applications in the crier.
Great.
Laura, might be in this memo, but when, given that we'll be publishing and whatever, when do you expect to be scheduling interviews approximately?
We had, we were planning on putting a deadline of late March for applications, and then we could, we'll work with you guys on looking at the, over those applications, deciding if interviews even need to be had. Sometimes in the past, when you don't have a lot of applicants, then.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, so.
Aprilish at the.
April, yeah, Aprilish.
So this announcement will go out in the March crier?
The March crier, yep, and we'll put it on the website as well.
All right, do you need anything more from us, Laura, or is that?
No, that's it. Thank you very much.
We'll move on then briefly to reports. I have a few reports. First of all, big news today is that the CML annual meeting in Snowmass has been postponed because the hotel there has said they can't take it, can't do an in-person meeting, so it may be reset. We're kind of looking at that, maybe reset to September. I'll let you know.
Russell, quick question about that. The email from CML said that the hotel said that they can't do any events in two thousand and twenty-one. Is that?
That's correct.
Right, that's really discouraging to hear.
So this would, this would obviously not be at the hotel. It would be a different, I mean, the board is meeting on Friday, and we'll discuss you know, different possibilities, and the staff's working on it. It would be some other, it'd probably be a combination of of a video and also in person, maybe something around Denver, so we, I don't know, but I'll let you know as soon as I hear.
Terrible sign for the meeting and event industry, if they're already saying they're not going to do any meetings this entire year.
Yeah, I didn't understand that, and I'm not sure. Maybe we can find out, because I've heard from others that that they're thinking August or September, they'll be opening back, most hotels will be opening back up, or they hope to anyway, so we'll see. On February third, we had Metro Mayor's Caucus. There is an extensive discussion of the legislative principles, and those are kind of the principles that guide the caucus on, when they look at, look at bills and take positions on things, and all. I'm going to use the March crier to outline those and explain some of those. It was a good discussion with the mayors, and obviously, we always talk about COVID at the mayors, at the mayors caucus as well. On February tenth, we had virtual lunch with Mayor Pico. at the mayor's caucus as well. On February tenth, we had virtual lunch with Mayor Pico, Bider Flur, and, and Mayor Lance. One thing that came up, we talked about a lot of things, COVID and others, but one thing that came up was they're telling me that they're seeing an increase in property crimes, particularly break-ins to automobiles and things. So just to be aware, I'm sure probably our chief has probably seen the same thing. Also, there's anecdotal discussions of, because during COVID, a lot of prisoners were released and they were, for COVID reasons, there's some statements that when police in Greenwood Village have arrested people, they've said, good luck, you know, I'll be right back out because there's no room for us in jails anymore. So it was, it's interesting. And I've heard the same thing from, on another mayor's call with mayors of Arvada and Lakewood as well. So I guess just be aware that there's, everybody has seen an increase in property crime, particularly break-ins to cars and car thefts. On February eleventh, there was a CML legislative workshop. It was kind of a day-long video Zoom call. The governor spoke, and I guess the most hopeful thing was, he said that he hopes the dials and all these restrictions will go away soon. You know, they can, it'll all be based on vaccination rates rather than on, on those, on the metrics that are being used for the dials. So we'll see. And increasing the vaccination rates is kind of a key, the key metric, and he hopes that that will be in the future. On the February twelfth, the policy committee met, the policy committee of the CML group met. And there's a couple of interesting things. One, one was, two, I guess, of importance for us, it really might affect us. One is the ACLU is drafting legislation that it calls officially the Jail Depopulation Bill. And the bill itself prohibits arrests for most municipal ordinance violations, misdemeanors, and even some felonies. So you can't be arrested, you just be summoned into the court. And the judges also cannot require monetary bond unless a defendant has failed to appear three times in a row. So, and then they can oppose the monetary bond to get them to appear. I, I think the overwhelming sense of the, the groups there of the Representatives of Policy Commission was that this is a bad idea. And again, they're also indicating that they're seeing an increase in property crimes as well during COVID. The other interest, another interesting one was a discussion of a, of a bill that affects the plastic products and, and use of that. CML has, for a long time, lobbied to eliminate a state statute that preempts local governments and for prohibiting sales of certain plastic products. Right now, we can't do it. We couldn't prohibit, or Denver couldn't prohibit the styrofoam, for example, because of the state statute. CML has always been trying to eliminate that on the theory that local control, that the cities are better, a better place to understand if they want to, if they want to ban certain plastics, they should be able to. This new there's new legislation now that actually does that. But at the same time, it imposes a statewide prohibition on single-use plastics, including straws, carryout bags, and styrofoam. So it's, it's traded a, you know, elimination of the preemption, which gives cities more flexibility with the imposition of a statewide mandate against certain plastics, including styrofoam. And that is actually a very close vote by the policy committee. And we'll see how it goes because in front of the board, because the board will take it up on Friday. But, you know, there's good arguments to be made that styrofoam is really bad. It is bad, and sort of the carryout bags. But on the other hand, you know, preempting local municipalities from, from that, the ability to, to say what they need in their own jurisdictions is, is an issue for the, for the, for the policy committee. The final one that's interesting is, is the natural gas industry is promoting legislation that preempts, that would preempt any local ordinance that limits or restricts national gas appliances in existing homes and businesses. And I think this is a reaction to some discussion in California where there are, some of the cities are, are banning a natural gas and new, and new installs in their homes and businesses. The, you know, I think the, the policy committee is overcoming, saying this is a, should be a local issue, and they oppose this. If a city in Colorado wants to ban natural gas, it can. I think most people are thinking it's, natural gas is great, but if an individual municipality wants to ban it, it should be a local issue, not a statewide issue. February fourteenth, actually today, that's, John Douglas spoke about Tri-County Health. I sat on that for half an hour. You know, his report is more of the same. All the COVID numbers are down, the vaccination numbers are up, and, and everything looks really remarkably good. So, so we'll see. Friday, the upcoming Friday, February nineteenth, is the CML Executive Board Meeting on Friday. And then we'll talk about, that's where we're talking about the annual meeting. I can, you can see what, what the options are for the CML meeting. The CML Business Meeting will still take place in June, in June. But the annual meeting will probably take place September, October. I'll let you know. That's my report. Other reports, Counselor Blum?
Mayor, I have no report, but I do have several questions. One is, have we made any progress in discussions with the cell providers that we've been meeting with? Has there been any progress down those lines? Maybe Chris can answer that.
Chris?
Yeah, Counselor Blum, we, we do have that scheduled for a study session, I believe, the second meeting in March. However, both myself and Director Goldie have been reaching out to our two contacts, the same two gentlemen who were on our call, Mayor and Counselor Blum and Counselor Wheel. And we have gotten radio silence, both of us have. And so stay tuned. Jay and I actually just were kicking around this topic today about what other ways we could, I, I, I'm not sure. It was a little odd considering how enthusiastic they were about, you know, looking into this issue for us with potentially adding some service. So stay tuned. You know, if we can get, if we can just get ahold of the guy, you know, we, we're hoping that we can keep that March sixteenth, I think it is, study session.
Okay, great. Second question I've got was raised by a constituent. Apparently, in Aurora, if he removes a tree of a five or six-inch caliber tree, he's got to replace it with a light tree. And this question was, if there's any type of ordinance similar to that in Cherry Hills, and I didn't know the answer to that. I don't know if that's something Chris you may know, or the city attorney may know.
We, we do have a tree preservation ordinance that generally affects new development. You know, when you're, when you're working with a site scraping, doing construction, if you're taking down a certain number of trees, you then have to replace it with a certain caliber inch of replacement value. Sometimes that doesn't always even have to equal the same number of trees. You could replace a single fifteen caliber inch tree with three five-inch caliber trees, for example. And it does go back a certain amount of time to say, if you, if you remove trees within the past, and I don't remember off the top of my head, a year or two, you also have to count that as a part of your tree replacement schedule. I can see the light of the screen of code on Kathy's face as she's looking up our code. I'm getting really good at the different colors. And I'm, my guess is she found the section of the code relevant.
Not yet.
Maybe by the, by the end of the reports, maybe we can.
That glazed look on my eyes, the dead giveaway, right?
Sixteen, four, two thirty, tree preservation, yeah. And it really is in conjunction with the development or an expansion. It's not just, if somebody wants to remove a tree in the middle of, you know, you know, i- i- it's not just, you know, a, a general maintenance, or if a tree has died and you're not doing any construction, you know, in the next couple of years, then there's, this, this particular section doesn't kick in. But it is rather specific about when you're doing it in conjunction with a construction project.
Thank you. Kathy, if you could let us know, that'd be great.
Yep, will do.
Okay. That was it for me. Thank you.
Counselor Sheldon?
Thank you. I've got one question. I've got two questions. First is for Chief Tovray. Chief, can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Chief, hi, good evening. I am looking at your January report. It was in our staff report, in our packets. And you've got seven vehicle trespasses for the month of January. Out of those, six of them were at a trailhead, not a named trailhead. I'm curious if they were at the same trailhead, number one, because that would indicate probably a problem at that particular trailhead. And number two, it seems like there was, excuse me?
I'm sorry, go ahead, sir. I'll wait for you to finish.
Oh, and then it seems like there were four that were purse snatches, and two they smashed and grabbed and went and got nothing. I'm just curious. I mean, it seems like a, a little bit of a series of, of thefts there at a particular trailhead, maybe. And I hope it's not, because that would indicate maybe a systemic problem. Can you address that?
Sure. I believe they happened at both trailheads. I apologize. I did not bring the addresses with me. But based on the reports that came in, I had my staff go out and look at one particular trailhead. And there are notices there that warn people to not leave their valuables in cars. But I've had a conversation with Director Goldie, and he and I have a plan to go out there because, to be honest with you, I think there's so much signage that even if you wanted to read something, you just kind of move past everything because the amount of signs that are at an area. But we, we did notice that. We are looking at it. And I know my staff is aware, and we have, have had extra patrols out since these have happened.
Okay, thank you. I guess I'd like to see what happens during the month of February, see if it's an ongoing continual issue. That just seems like a lot of the same event happening at the same, maybe the same trailhead, but maybe not. Maybe it's two. We'll see what happens in the month of February, and if we need to address it further. Thank you, Chief. My, my second is for Director Goldie. Jay, it seems to me like there's not been a whole lot of progress in the last couple of weeks since we discussed this last. What's going on with Quincy undergrounding?
XL and their contractor continue to move forward. It's going to be a very slow process because of the number of utilities within that corridor. The corridor is completely full with water, sewer, telecommunications, cable. So XL has had to slow down, and they are potholing every fifteen to twenty feet as they bore. So it is going to be a very slow process to get that done. They still think they can get it done in three to four weeks just for the boring. And then, of course, some more time to pull the wires and set all of the pedestals and take down the poles. But it is, it is a slow going process.
And Jay, they were out there today, right?
Yes, they were out there today.
I was about to make mention of that, that I, you know, I'm, I'm rolling out usually around eight in the morning and sometimes back for the lunch hour, and then back around five, six PM every day. Sometimes I see a truck out there in the right of way, a truck, but I'm not seeing any major activity during the times that I'm in and out of there. Is it possible that there's a whole bunch of people there during those big four-hour chunks while I'm not there? Yes, it's absolutely possible. But maybe should just have your crews report back as far as what, what they're seeing, what kind of activity out on site, because it doesn't appear to be much going on out there.
Okay.
Thanks, Jay.
I will continue to monitor that.
Thank you. That is all.
Counselor Gallagher?
Actually, Jay, stay on. Can you give us a quick update on the status of the Quincy Farm Pond? And what are the plans moving forward as to improve the quality of the pond for the bird, mainly, mainly the bird life?
At this time, with, with everything being on hold, we, we don't have a completed plan for that. Park staff has been out there the last few years, taking out some of the invasive species, the Russian olives, those type of things. But at this point, without a completed plan, we don't have a specific plan as to how we're going to move forward with either the water quality, the trees, any of that at this point.
Jay, have we figured out how, I think you were looking into the pump system in terms of being able to fill that pump from the existing aquifer? Has that been solved?
That has been solved. We, as long as the water table holds out, we did have the well, our contractor that does some of the work on our wells for us, lower that pump as low as we can. So we got a little over eighty more feet. The aquifer has filled up a little more this winter. We have filled the pond. And we, we don't know with the drought situation, if, if everything went like it did last summer, we'll be out of water and will not be able to fill the pond sometime in August or September. We are still able to water the lawn because the sprinkler system is on potable Denver Water System, but we have no other means to fill the pond except from the well.
Okay. Thank you. So, counselors, as you know, I'm the liaison to the Voes Crier. And after last, our last meeting, I reached out to Jessica and, and we, we discussed, I just don't want to go into a, as we move forward with the crier, I want to support Mayor Stewart in his ability to write that. And, and I wanted to get a review, have a review of it. I pulled in City Manager Kramer, and then it really made sense to pull Mayor Stewart into that same meeting. So it was Director, Director Sager, City Manager Kramer, Mayor Stewart, and me. And, and the idea was to sort of put, review the process that we would go through in terms of, as the mayor, so the mayor's, the process is, the mayor submits his column to, to Director Sager, and she reviews it. And then it goes out to City Manager Kramer, it goes out to me, and, and then we give feedback. And a lot of times, it's, it's, a lot of it's, to Mayor Stewart's credit, he, the guy writes well. And, and so there's very little in terms of grammatical stuff that takes place with it. But what, you know, the crux of it is that we're going to have columns that are not controversial. For example, Russell's going to write about the Metro Mayor's Caucus this next, this next column. And I can tell you, the content of that is, people are not going to get excited about that. It's very factual. It's really just, it's sharing that information with the, with our, with our readers. But there will be, as we know, that there'll be other columns that will be more, more called controversial. And they'll have different interpretations, you know, words are ambiguous at times. And so we, the, the four of us were really trying to, to come up with sort of a system that would be able to give Russell the freedom to write his column, and yet put some rails on it so that if something were specifically his opinion, he would recognize it as his opinion. Because I think he would be the first one to say that he's trying to write truthful, accurate information. But again, it's the interpretation of that. And Russell, safe statement so far, you know, in terms of this?
Yeah, the mayor's report is my report, obviously. And I, I try to take pains and to make sure that I'm not speaking for the entire council and that. And so if I ever do, and that's, and I think Mike is a good sounding board for that. And so if I ever do, and that's, and I think Mike is a good sounding board for that, and he uses it before it goes out, make sure that that won't happen. And if it is my opinion, I'll say that, I'll say this is my opinion, and that's, you know, may not be the council's opinion, of course. It depends on the subject matter and that, I think that's fair. And the other thing we talked about too is, is Counselor Gallagher had raised earlier on about council members wishing to write a column, and all that is encouraged. I mean, you know, from my point of view, the more information we have and the more thoughts we have to residents, the better. So if council members want to write, you know, their opinions feel free. I think that's, I think it'd be a good thing for residents to know how, how we all think. And it is a nice, it is a nice amenity, it's a nice way of communication to our residents. I agree with that, Mike.
And I would just say, get, reach out to Jessica and let her know that you're interested in doing it, give her some lead time so we can get it folded in to the Crier in the addition. So, but I just wanted to, for other council members, I want you to understand, we, you know, it was very disturbing this last, the conflict was disturbing. And, and we really wanted to go forward in a very, as positive as possible, to be able to give Russell the ability to write his own column, but to put some rails on it, you know, if things were controversial, let's say.
Mike, are you also, I mean, if another counselor wants to write a column, I think similarly, they're speaking for their own opinion, not the council. And I would think that it would be consistent, process-wise, to have you involved, you know, your group involved in just taking a quick read through that and making sure that we're not, you know, in effect, causing some potential disturbance.
Yeah, good point, Randy, and I think it would be absolutely, yeah, it's going to get reviewed because it's, Jessica's not going to let it go into that Crier, none of us are going to let it go into that Crier without a good review.
Right, and that's not, that's not based on experiences or, or anything along those lines, just, you know, good, good check and balance kind of process.
Hey, Mike, I want to, I want to thank you for, for doing this. I think it's important and I think it's very timely and, and Mayor Stewart, I appreciate you working with Mike and Jessica to make sure that we have that checks and balance that Randy just suggested. I think it's, it's good work all around, so thank you all.
I think we're on the same, thank you, Dan, I think we're on the same page, making, you know, I think communication to our residents is essential. It's like, one of the most important things we do is communicate, you know, let, inform them about what's going on, but we, but we do need to make sure that it's, it's not misinterpreted about who it's coming from and, or it's properly interpreted about who it is coming from. So I think that's all, I think that's all exactly right. Right?
That's all I have, thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Mayor Potem Brown.
Well, I'll start there. I guess what I would say is, thank you, as Dan said, to you guys for trying to work that out. I will confess that I don't know that I feel like I'm on the same page. I feel like perhaps I have a different vision of what the Crier is intended to be. As a taxpayer-funded publication, I feel that that is a publication for the city to communicate city information to the residents. And I appreciate that there would be an opportunity for other people to express opinions, but I don't know that, I think perhaps The Villager is the more appropriate forum for editorial content. And I really actually would hate to see the Crier become a point and counterpoint argument. I think it's, you know, that's, these are taxpayer dollars. People are free to speak their mind and express their opinions, but that doesn't necessarily mean that the taxpayers have to pay for that to be disseminated to everyone. So I might be in a slightly different place as it result, as it relates to that. But I hope that that, you know, isn't even an issue anymore. Couple of quick questions. John Mead Park, do we have an update on that?
I have.
We do.
Oh, would you like me to hold off until the end?
No, now's a great time, Emily. We had, we had an update planned for you tonight.
Okay, well then, well, you can just do it at that time, that's great. And then also the Quincy Farm RFP, are you going to update on that?
Yeah, that's on my list for all of you.
Oh, okay.
Seeing where everybody was at with red lines. So it was more of a nudge to all of you. I've gotten some red lines back, but, you know, staff is busy making changes based on our conversations. But there was also, I know there were some of you that wanted to send us written comments as well, and so I would just encourage, if you don't have any written comments, we would appreciate to know that too. So let us know one way or the other, if you could.
Yeah, I think your last email did say that, and I think I'm one of the people that hasn't gotten back to, that I don't have, I hate wordsmithing, so I'm not going to do that. I gave my.
And that's fine.
Full comments at the meeting, and I think that's it. And so then my last point, I just wanted to circle back. At the last meeting during our discussion, I referenced some comments that I attributed to Counselor Sepavvi. He did not recall making those statements and suggested that I, you know, find them in the minutes and let him know. And so I did do that. It was the September 1st meeting, which was where Natalie presented, not her proposal, but the one-page letter of interest. And the comments start at approximately 1:30 into the meeting. And, you know, I don't know that I need to directly relate all of them, but basically the comment was, I'm in favor of the transfer. And goes on, I think it's a great move for the city, come up with a set date, and this is in response to a one-page letter. So Counselor Sepavvi, you asked me to point that out to you, and that is what I was referring to.
Well, Brown, great detective work.
Hold on, Counselor Brown, just as a floor, anything else, Counselor Brown?
Nope, that's it.
Right, Counselor Wheel. Oh, you're on mute, Randy? Sorry.
These days I learn how to operate this thing. Sorry. Anyway, Dr. Cog, not much going on, the, well, there's a lot going on, but not much that affects us. You know, they're working through the metrovision plans and the methodology and the modeling and all that other stuff at the working session last two weeks ago. And then I'll give you a report in two weeks on what happens at the next board meeting. Let's see, the, Jay, a question, you know, I've lost track of the Bellevue and what we were going to try to do on the median there. It seemed like CDOT kind of had the ball and we were going to do some kind of archaeological dig at great expense and so on. You know, and I think you had a plan for a workaround with them that might, might produce better results quicker. Is there any update that you have on that?
Yes, CDOT does not have the ball, we have the ball. I asked our, in our consultant to put together a cost for me, just to put together some maintenance plans instead of full-blown construction plans, which would involve the archaeological digs and all of that. And their cost came back at over $17,000 just to turn in the permit with two or three drawings. That's not acceptable to me, to turn that in, to not even know if we're going to get that permit. CDOT may come back and say, no, we need the full-blown permit. I've reached out to some other firms, I have not heard back from them. So I'm continuing to try to find a more feasible and financially practical way to do that, to just get something into CDOT so they can respond to us. Because without a permit, they, they won't respond yes or no unless we, we turn something in. And those permits do have to have some drawings showing what we want to do. So I continue to try to move that forward as I can.
Sure, okay, that, that sounds great. Thank you, thank you for the information, Jay. I think the only other thing, and I know it's been, you've probably all been in a similar situation, but I've received a bunch of phone calls about the e-bikes, and I would say that none of them are in favor of e-bikes being permitted on paths and all of that. That's all I have.
Okay, and Counselor Wheel, that issue's going to come back to council. So, so we'll, we'll have a chance then to, to get PTRC's take on it and understand what they did and review all that public input.
Yeah, I did read, I think if I read correctly, the meeting minutes suggested, what was it, like six to one against e-bikes last PTRC meeting? Or you'd know, Chris, about that better than I, but.
Yes, it did, it did, and Emily is on our call too, she can provide more context or details. But yeah, they did vote, there was quite a few folks who spoke and received a ton of letters and emails that were all in the record. And some were in favor of allowing e-bikes, but a majority, a pretty significant majority were against. And at the end of the day, the vote was six to one recommending to council not to do it. Council did direct the PTRC to look at this issue. So even though what they're recommending is no change to the current code, we're still going to bring it back to council just to close the loop. You can either follow through on their recommendation and do nothing, or you can, you know, direct staff to explore changes. So, but it was PTRC's recommendation to leave it as it is, which is to say prohibit e-bikes.
Got it, thanks, that's all I have.
Counselor Sepavvi.
Just a couple of points. First of all, I want to thank Counselor Gallagher, thank you for, again, echo what some of the other council also mentioned to you. I think that's great, you know, going out and coming out with a system or process that, you know, puts balance and checks and makes everybody feel more comfortable, that's great. So, you know, kudos to you, to the mayor, to the city, to the city manager, and so, great, great job with that. Nor report other than, it was interesting, usually, I guess I'm one of those councilmen that maybe get, you know, a couple of calls a month, but in the past few days, I actually got a good number of calls and, and folks that I think went and looked at the video later on. And they were sort of sharing with me, you know, their concern or their, what is the best word for it? Maybe a lack of better word, amazed with the way some council members behaved or the interaction, the way it went down and people talked to each other. And, you know, as a councilman, to be honest with you, I think for me, I listened and I, I thanked them for, you know, take, you know, actually watching the video or however they got the information. And I said, look, you know, this is, this is the city, a small city, if you guys have concerns, questions, encourage you to come and, and take the time and, and during the public speaking time. So that's where I left it. That's all, no more, no news from my end, Mayor, that's all. No report.
Thank you, Counselor Sepavvi. Okay, City Manager report.
I had four things, and other council folks have brought up three of them, which means that they were just on-point items. That's how I'm going to choose to take it. The dial, the basis for the dial is changing, and the foundation of that is changing, as Mayor Stewart mentioned. I think residents are going to find a lot more options for, you know, shopping and restaurants and all those things, since it's going to be tied to vaccinations and not necessarily some of the indicators. That is a pretty significant change. It really does, though, probably de facto put a nail in the coffin of the five-star program. We only had one, one business participate anyway, but they aren't even taking new applications right now. So the second item was the Zayo update, and just that we've been trying to reach out to them and have gotten crickets. And so we're going to try and get more creative with how we reach out to them. We're really surprised. It's just, it's just a shocking turn compared to the vibe that we were getting, or at least that I personally was taking.
Chris, great, they were very enthusiastic at our last meeting, and then all of a sudden they've gone silent. It's crazy.
Yes, yeah, it was, it was strange. So, but especially for the three committee members, we're trying to get creative with how we reach out to them. So stay tuned. Thanks to Mayor Potem Brown for the nudge, to all of you about red lines for the RFP. Again, staff, at a staff level, we're meeting a little bit later, we had a, we came up with a plan of how to break down all of the feedback we received verbally. And so we're in the middle of working on that as we speak. But we also want to hear all of your feedback, and that includes red lines and anything else you got. So, you know, I'm just going to say, if we could get that from everybody, maybe by the end of next week, by a week on Friday, that would be much appreciated. And then my last item that is new is I am on vacation starting in five minutes for the rest of the week. So I'm going to be pretty much out of pocket in the mountains, but if emergencies come up, I'll be available. And I do think we have some additional reports from staff. So I don't know if we want to go down the line. Chief, do you have any additional reports?
No, just, well, yes, actually, just a couple of comments with regard to what Mayor Stewart was saying about property crimes on the rise in the metro area. Yes, the chiefs that I talked to, they definitely see those trends. I still believe that the village does not, the trends don't go as high as some of our neighbors, and you can see that on our crime mapping. Yes, going from, you know, one trespasser, two to seven is a lot in our book, and that means a lot to us, and we will stay on it. But one, one trend that's going up in a lot of places is auto theft, and we have not seen that in the village. So I just wanted to report on that just a little bit, and that's all I have.
Director Goldie, do you have any?
I was going to give an update on John Mead Park, but I will let Emily Black, our parks coordinator, do that since she's the one that's put in the hall, all the hard work to get us to this point.
Thank you, Jay. Yes, for John Mead Park, we had our final playground inspection last week, and we received news today that our playground passed inspection. So our contractor will be coming to pick up the fence in the next couple of days, or we might get impatient and have our crews move the fence until they can get here. This was the last step we were waiting for, so the park is fully open now. So we're publishing an announcement in the March Village Crier, and whichever day in the next couple of days that the fence comes down, I'll be publishing an update on social media, sending an email blast, and just getting the word out that the park is open. So we're very excited.
That's great, congratulations.
Thank you. Oh, and, sorry, if I can just add, Chris, thank you for the great summary about the e-bike issue, you covered it. We have that scheduled for the March 16th council meeting on that draft agenda, and if, counselors, you're getting more calls, we are going to be publishing in the March Crier a summary of the PTRC meeting and that date coming up. But if folks submitted letters for the PTRC meeting, we will automatically be including them in council packets. People don't need to resubmit letters. So if you're getting that question, they will automatically be included unless somebody wants to update what they sent. Thank you.
Good addition. Director Sager?
I just have a fun announcement. I've embarrassed City Clerk Gillespie all day today, so I would just like to take this time to say happy birthday, thank you for spending your evening with us, one last time.
Happy birthday!
Terrific, happy birthday.
Thanks.
It's my son's, it's my son's birthday too, that's amazing.
It's a great day.
It's a great day.
A great day.
It's also Marty, so there you go.
That is true. My, my presence here was a council meeting, so top that, everyone, yeah.
Doesn't get better than that.
She got to do, she got to write the, uh, 23 pages of minutes from the last meeting, that was happy birthday.
Yeah. I did, I did want, the chief reminded me of something. I did want to give a shout out to the chief for a great job of communication about the body that was found, um, on Clarkson and, and Little Dry Creek. Um, that was great, uh, messaging it out. It actually worked really well on, on Nextdoor because this whole discussion began on Nextdoor about, you know, 30 people were back and forth, what is it, what's going on, what's going on? And then somebody said, oh, the city has already explained it. And then they attached, um, the chief's, you know, you know, um, update about what happened. So it was just a perfect kind of, um, um, a, a social media kind of thing. But that, that is so important, and I want to give a shout out to the chief for doing that. Because a lot of times that's the only thing people, it's the only time our citizens really have any contact with us is like when the police tell them about crime and they're really concerned. But so that was, I, I, I just think that's so important, the communication, getting it out timely and getting it right is just really, really good. So, thank you for that, chief.
Yeah.
On that same note, given, you know, your conversation with CML and our information, should we publish something, should the city publish something next door about a general increase in car break-ins and remain vigilant? I know that's a common issue, um, in my neighborhood, and people get particularly upset when there's been kind of a rash of things and they didn't know about it. Um, so maybe that would be a good opportunity to just post something like that.
I, I know the chief has done that in the past, and I think that's always a good idea. I would suggest that we use notify me, our city, and, and not use Nextdoor because Nextdoor goes out to everybody, and we read about Inglewood all the time. It sounds like it's a terrible place, but notify me, I think if people really want to hear about it and they sign up for it, and then they should get the notice. I think that's a great idea. I know that we've, I know the chief did it in the past about some mail thefts. She gave some notice about that, that was really important. Um, yeah, chief, I guess, you know, leave it to your discretion, but if you think that would be a good thing to push out there, let us know.
And it doesn't even have to be specific to Cherry Hills. It could be more like communities around the metro area are.
Right.
Yep.
Being this increase, so please be vigilant.
Sure, uh, and we're happy to do that. That is, uh, the trespass message is one that I have sent out many, many times. Um, and specifically, probably in the last, uh, couple of years to try to get people to lock their cars and to please stop leaving valuables, uh, in their cars. But we're certainly, we can certainly do that, we can certainly do that again.
People have short memories, so it's always good, good to do it. All right, any, anything else for the good of the cause here? If not, everybody have a terrific week.
I, I'm supposed to give a report, Mayor.
Oh, I'm sorry, I think, please.
I'll keep it quick because I want Chris to get on vacation. But, um, of course, I've been working, uh, on, um, Denver First Church with, with folks in my firm and, um, the franchise things, those have been keeping me busy, but things are moving along nicely. To Counselor Sheldon's point about new process, you will see resolutions in Denver First Church proposed for your consideration on the site plan amendment and the, uh, preliminary site plan. Here to fore, the city has operated in doing this via motion. But given our new code, the new processes, and the, what we feel is a very beneficial, um, side effect of sort of outlining the rationale behind decisions. Um, that's, you'll see that in your packet when, when that matter comes before you. So I want to give you a heads up on that. And then working with the chief on updating the model traffic code. Um, and we've got various issues on right of way, and I'm going to be visiting with PTRC on training and, and answering some specific legal questions, I believe they have for me. I'm not sure what those are yet, but, um, so that's it.
Hey Kathy, real quick, you, you, you said that we'll be getting a resolution for the, for the site plan amendment and preliminary site plan. Did you mean preliminary plat?
Yes, thank you. Yes, I'm focused on Chris getting up to the mountains, so.
Yeah, but, 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 um, it's an important point because, um, you're not used to seeing those in your packet for either of those processes, previously the expanded use process. Um, Laura went back and did a bunch of research, and it's been by motion forever. And, um, you know, I think because of the code change, but also I think because of best practices that I certainly subscribe to, and I think, uh, that City Attorney Geckonberger does as well. I, I'm pretty adamant that we really should be doing these by resolution, um, and not by motion. So that will be new in your packet. It's nothing earth shattering, but it is, it is something you should look for in the next packet.
Very good, thank you.
All right, thank you, Kathy. All right, anything else, anybody? If not, um, ask for unanimous consent, do we stand adjourned?
Show move.
There is no objection. Everybody take care, stay safe.